Okay, so it's six o'clock. I'd like to open up the meeting. Are there any adjustments to the agenda for tonight? We may juggle some things around and make logistics go a little bit easier. Then I would like to, you know, with the, there was an issue about the rail trail that came up last time, so I'd like to just talk a little bit about that, maybe, you know, unofficially towards the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Just to get a sense of what we might want to think about for that as far as a town having rights to. So I'd like to open up the meeting to, for public comment, so this is a good time.
Yes.
Justin?
Ladies and gentlemen, come here tonight to request the board pass a resolution declaring our town to be an Article 16, Second Amendment, Constitution, sanctuary township. We, the people of Woodbury, have taken notice of the recent growing hostility among our lawmakers towards our inalienable right of self-defense. This is evident, evidenced in their attempts to pass legislation eroding our right to keep and bear arms in defense of ourselves and the state as protected by Article 16 of the Vermont Constitution and the Second Amendment of the Constitution of the United States. Despite our objections and overwhelming evidence to contrary, law-abiding gun owners continue to be blamed for the horrendous acts of violence which occur, or which continue to plague our country and to much lesser extent, our state. We live, we live in peace as all good people do, yet continue to draw the attention of lawmakers attempting to fix the problem by targeting good people. While there's no doubt that our society doesn't pack seem to have problem with violence, criminalizing peaceful people for owning a tool to protect their families will solve no problems and do nothing except create more criminals. The inalienable self, the inalienable right to self-defense does not come from man or man's laws. These rights pre-exist all governments and are part of our natural, our nature as persons. The founders of this country and the state of Vermont understood the importance of arms in the hands of the common man as not only a hedge against invasion, but as a deterrent to tyranny and oppression from our own government. Civilian-owned firearms have countless, firearms that save countless more lives every year than take. Often we mirror, often the mere presence of a gun serves as a deterrent to violence in the hands of our weakest and most vulnerable. It is for these reasons that we ask the board to adopt this resolution as a symbol of our civil disobedience to those who would attempt to render us defenseless. Thank you.
So it's my understanding that the select board really can't adopt that, but I don't know that for sure. And, you know, I know that other towns, other people have come before their town select board or, you know, worked out signings to get it onto the town meeting. I think most of the, there are a number of towns that will be, this will be a discussion at town meeting.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're a little bit too late to do that at town meeting as officially warned article to be discussed and voted on by the town folk. And in a way, I would prefer this to be a town discussion rather than a discussion between the.
No, I agree. I agree with that.
But it is my understanding that this, there is a, at the end of the meeting, there is the opportunity to bring up other business before those that are at town meeting, and that would be an opportunity if the town meeting body chose to discuss this, to do that. So for this year, I mean, that sounds like the best option to bring this before the town, to me, anyway. I know Brian and Paul have.
Yeah, just a tiny thing, yeah, that's all.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep, so if you showed up for town meeting, obviously, we know.
Right.
Yeah, we've heard it, so we'll, we'll get you to want to do it there, so.
Right, yeah.
The town can vote on it at that point.
I don't, Diana isn't sure if the town can because it hasn't been warned. It could be discussed.
But you could have the discussion, which is probably what you want.
You could have the discussion, you could have a show of hands, but whether it would be officially adopted or not because it wasn't warned. Technically, anything that isn't warned on the town meeting agenda can't be voted on.
Right. That's correct.
Plus, I think it's up to the moderator whether he thinks it's a subject to remain to be discussed.
So, you know, you might come to the town meeting, talk to whoever the moderator is, probably Steve Freihoffner. I don't, I can't see why.
I wouldn't, why you wouldn't have the conversation with town residents and talk about something, so.
Yeah, so, and then you would probably have the opportunity to read what you've read just now, and then we'd get, you know, if the moderator approves it to beforehand to be a part of the town meeting and a discussion, and what happened then. All right? Okay?
Perfect. Thank you for bringing it.
Not a problem. And I should all just keep up with the petition and.
Yep.
I just had a boatload of people that signed it that aren't even residents.
Yeah, this happens.
My understanding is that you need 5% of the total.
There is.
Which I do have that.
Yeah, we need it after going through everybody.
Okay. Out of the 100 people that signed.
So if you'd been on it like two weeks ago or a month ago, it would have been.
Would have been in there.
Would have been in there, yeah.
But it's still coming.
It's still coming forward, so I would come to town meeting and bring it up.
Oh, nobody else was really taking any lead on it, so I said, same way, just go stand up.
Sure. Good. Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can you leave them with a copy of the published ordinance just so they can look at what it actually says to you?
Yep.
We were right with Laura for now.
She knows where you want us.
She won't lose it.
Yeah, she won't lose it. Whereas with us, you never know. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Have a good night.
So let's see if Brandy is ready to come in.
We have to do our minutes and.
All right, sorry.
Do our other stuff.
Thank you. So I would like to make a motion that we approve the bills to the town.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then I would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the January 27th, 2020, select board meeting and the February 5th, 2020, special select board meeting.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
There's. Hang on, there's one to sign. And. There's the letter. There's the other, two pages on the next one. Oh, looks like she's going to pick. Just checks out.
Diana, do you know what is part of reviewing the.
That's what I was. You want to do it now?
No, we'll do it after the, after the town clerk's report. We're kind of moving things around there. I should have thought better about that order.
Actually, that's the file that you have.
Oh, I want to ask you this. That's good. This is going to go back in here. This one goes. So we have Paul, Brian, Michael, and. So for cash receipts over the last two weeks, overweight fleet permits, records restoration for recording, vital records, copies at cost, land record copies, town hall rental fee, vault fees, and zoning permits. Delinquencies, we took in $12,069.
Good job.
Yeah, see what you're doing. Put a job on that.
You do, you work it out for every job.
I ended up only needing $3,000 to transfer over for, from the money market today. So on this guy, we had talked about setting up an account.
The mountain view?
Yeah.
This is the.
The alarm system.
Alarm monitoring, yeah.
Yeah, the garage security.
Is he billing us twice a year or monthly?
It's twice.
Twice a year, that's what I thought.
You're talking about maybe having a budget category for that?
And we've talked about setting that up, but when I pulled it up as far as a vendor and accounts payable, I want to narrow it down to a location because the first three was because of that passive grant.
Right. Okay, yeah, the paid, help pay for it, I should say.
Correct.
Yeah, we should, you know, it could just be.
So.
Fire alarm. Annual maintenance, you may test it.
In your highway.
And you've got the monitoring charge.
Yeah.
So maybe we should have a category, all fire alarm, annual maintenance, and then also monitoring. Should be two.
Yeah, or just garage fire alarm, and then they could both go underneath there.
Well, it might just explain it better if someone asked, there's two fees they have to, they have to do their service every year plus their.
Yeah, we could have two.
Monitoring. I'd just like to break them down, there was someone that says, what's this mean?
It's clear, yeah.
This is maintenance, because the state requires you to have it looked at once a year, test it, and then you could monitor.
Yeah, we had a lot of other initial fees with that that were covered under the passive grant.
So that's all in place now, right?
Yeah, it's been in place for over a year now.
Yeah, over a while.
Yeah, 18 it was installed.
And that was kind of required, strongly suggested by passive.
Yeah.
That's their main, that's one of the main things that they made payments on for town garage fires.
No cameras though, probably, with that?
There's no cameras, no. No, it's just fire.
I can look into it, I did look at their stuff, because we got a grant for some stuff this year, I don't think a camera will look.
So do you want separate categories, one for monitoring and then one for contract? Or how do you, how do we want these, how do you want them?
One for maintenance.
So you have a title called fire alarm, one should be fire alarm maintenance, then fire alarm monitoring, because they're just separate, they're separate things. Because they come in every year, they'll service it, test it, clean it.
That's the maintenance part?
That's the maintenance part, required by the state, you have to do every year.
And then we get a fee, it's a monthly fee for the.
Monitoring.
Monitoring. So like, obviously, you know, like at night, nobody's there.
Right.
But there's somebody.
Monitoring it at their central station, yeah.
Yeah, so every night they leave, they turn it on.
It's always on, yeah.
It's always on.
Oh, it's always on.
So if that rings it off.
So if they were working on the roads and something happened, again, the monitor would.
Monitoring company would call our dispatcher, we would get dispatch.
The fire department is one of the numbers to call. I'm not sure where else is.
So it's always the same, it's just two installments of 200 and something like that twice a year.
Yeah, it's a monthly fee of like $26 a month, I think, or something like that.
But since it's not in the budget, well, it's, yeah, they just won't be budgeted for.
This year, right?
Right. Because they were going into, there was garage maintenance and then outside services.
So it was paid last year probably on a garage maintenance, right? Because I'm sure we got.
The first one was out of garage maintenance, the second one was outside services.
Okay, so.
So I can do a journal entry for those, but for.
Yeah, it'll look like a negative because we didn't have a category, but technically it's, it isn't.
Could we make this change, you know, usually just before the, as we're getting ready to do the tax bills, we kind of go over the budget and there are some changes that are made then, just to.
Increase them.
Well, you know, we could take, if money was taken out of some of the other parts to pay for it last year, we could just decrease those a little bit and, just so that they're line items on the budget. I mean, we can.
It'll be there this year, it'll just show up as a negative in this category, which will have excess in another category.
Right.
So it'll cover itself, and just on paper, it'll look funny this year until we do next year.
Right.
I would just create the categories myself, just let it be.
Yeah, just put zero.
Yeah, zero is in, because zero is in the budget, we spend X amount of dollars.
Yeah, it's doing merge.
Technically, it's in that other category, but you're right, when we do the budget, we'll, we'll adjust that. I find it's good to like break this stuff down to the nitty-gritty.
No, that's the whole, whole reason for this, is to have it pretty transparent and obvious and.
That way the stopped questions, you can look at it, oh, maintenance, oh, monitoring, they can ask you what that is, but what is it?
So your term is this year?
Both of ours.
Yep.
Yeah.
Is yours more than a year now?
Three years.
Three.
Three. Yeah. I thought it was a year, but it has never been.
So outside services, you want me to kick this one over to garage maintenance?
Uh, well, sometime, I mean, they're kind of.
You want me to check my numbers to see?
Let's, let's keep them both as they are now, I think.
Leave this here?
Oh, I mean, the money for the fire alarm, the bill to the fire alarm, put it all under one heading that we have currently set up.
Do you want me to take it in August, I put it under outside services? Do you want me to move it to garage repairs and maintenance?
I would if we're going to create that category.
Okay.
That way it's a disclaimer.
Together.
Yeah, so it'll show, again, it's going to show up as a negative in that category, but.
Right.
Okay.
And do you want Greg signing off on these, on this one?
Uh, sure.
Somebody should, just to say that they were there and.
Yeah, I mean, I could, I suppose, but I think it would be good, good for him.
I'll start putting in his. Yep.
Just to say, yes, they were here.
Right.
And then let him know the accounts are going to be popping up.
There's quite a paper trail on that, goes right through our department, too. We get a, we get a notice that it got done.
The transfer, our due to, due from numbers, that's on the back of your, the last page on your financial statements.
Get on that, the time will come short here. Work on the pavings out, they can start getting somebody to look at the road. We're going to have some engineering type people, you got to get on that.
It should be plenty for the village?
Yeah, it will be, according to the estimates that.
Yeah, they should be able to pave the parking lot and the road up to the school.
Good, that'd be nice.
And, you know.
Question mark is the road work, how much that's going to cost.
Right. And, you know, the road work, we should know pretty soon whether we got the Better Roads Grant.
Okay.
I'll, I'll send an email to Alan May and ask him.
Yeah. Because their, really a nimble thing is just getting some design done.
Yep.
And some kind of.
And, you know, there is, I know the estimates for the paving were around $40,000 for the two pieces, so there might be some money in there that we could.
Yeah, we could.
Use for the design, but if we get the Better Roads Grant, that would pay for the actual work.
Got it.
The pre-work.
The pre-work, to get the road ready, get the road, get the drainage right.
Yep.
You don't want to pave it with the drainage wrong.
No. We'll have all that fixed first.
Is that something that we will have the town road crew do, or?
No, we were talking about contracting.
Yeah, so that's to be determined. I think a lot of it has to do whether we get this grant or not, because I think if we don't get the grant, they'll have to do some of it, maybe the trucking or something.
Yeah.
But, you know, it might, might be, you could put someone with a truck, because a lot of the lost stuff will haul out of there, so.
Yeah, this could be kind of technical, we want it to the right grade.
Well, it's going to be right, that's why I wanted to get someone to look at it, so.
We'll get, you know, Alan May involved, and we'll get somebody from the, maybe Norm Patton will come again.
Yeah, we're going to talk to Norm first, see what he suggested, because it might be big enough where Pike is interested in it again.
And if there's enough, if there's enough money in the paving fund to actually pay.
That parking lot is completely in self-destruct mode, you've been through it, haven't you? Totally going.
I bet Lynn's boss would bid on it, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would put it out to bid.
We have to go out to bid on this, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, if we're going to contract it out, we would definitely have to put it out to bid.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be nice, that would be.
And I'll just step aside until the next one pops up.
Yeah. So, so here's my thinking now with the agenda. Diana, would you like to be involved in the review of the personnel policy also? Brandy is going to be, okay. So what, are you ready to do a town clerk's report?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's have the town clerk's report next, and then we'll, with both Brandy and Diana, we'll go over the review of the elected town officials and then the personnel policy.
Okay.
And that should be a chunk of the meeting, just doing those things.
Well, the town report went to the printers, I gave the final approval, I think, a day after I sent you the copy that I never got back. That should be published.
I don't think I ever received a copy of it.
Well.
But it's, probably didn't get a response.
Oh, well. I had to cut it off at some point.
Got to go eventually, right?
I did, I did lose a whole day's worth of emails on it last Thursday.
Oh.
I don't want.
Yeah, weird.
But you already sent it out by then.
Right. Yeah, I.
Anyway.
Sent you that little last copy from the printers, and there were a couple things that needed to be tweaked a little bit, and they did that, and I think I gave them the final approval on Saturday or Friday. And that should be printed and in the mail by the 18th, which is.
Next weekend.
The town, plenty of time, 10 days before town meeting. So I haven't a test to worry about much else, doing some absentee ballots, trying to catch up on some other things. There might be other things I need to do to get ready for a town meeting, but I'll find out whether that school PA system is going to be sufficient so that we don't hire, hire somebody, because I think they had that last year.
We had it, they had it, it just wasn't up and running.
Oh, okay.
The speakers installed, they had cooked everything.
Okay.
Did we rent from Gagnon's again last year?
Well, last year we rented from Robin Grant.
Robin Grant, okay.
Yeah, but hopefully we won't have to, because it looks like they've got a new system, right, Brandy?
Yeah, hopefully it's up and running.
So I asked Steve to check into that, I don't know.
Steve Freihoffner, should I check into it?
Well, I asked him to, I don't.
Check in with him, Brandy.
I'll take, yeah, make sure.
All an ass done?
Make sure, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah.
And, and what about the pre-town meeting, have we contacted the?
Yes.
Brad or whoever?
6:30 on Tuesday. Or did it 20 something?
Not sure.
No, 27?
27.
Thursday?
Yeah, 27, 6:30, right?
It's like next week.
It's, well, two weeks, almost, little over two weeks, don't, I like when it gets over fast, dude, so.
Does it mean town hall or school?
At the community room.
Yeah, that's where we did it last year, last couple of years, that worked out okay. And Brandy's going to be there to open the door. If she's not, the library is open that night anyway, so.
Okay.
6:30, 27.
And I'm guessing that Don Turgeon knows about setting up the chairs and stuff like that, but I'll check with him before then. I get a bunch of ballot clerks lined up, because it's going to be a long day for balloting, and then after 7 o'clock, we're going to have two, two ballot boxes that have to go out to Hardwick Elementary, the Hardwick, the Union Elementary vote and the Hazen vote. They're going to be in the same place, but two separate sections. So we should send at least two people, because there'll be a lot of counting to be done.
I'm willing to be one of those.
Okay, yeah, okay. And you?
Yeah.
You usually.
I usually.
Do we have to have two separate voting areas for the primary? No, so it could just all be the same, but they got to go in different boxes?
Oh, definitely, yeah. We're going to have to drag out three boxes.
Three boxes?
Yeah, one for the primary and one for the, I don't think, Republican, yeah, I don't think the primary gets two boxes, I think the first thing we do when we open those boxes is separate the Republicans and the Democrats.
You got a box for each school thing.
Yeah.
So that, that counting has to happen, too?
That's right, at the, at the polling place.
At the polling, at the school, okay.
Yeah, so we'll need counters.
There's usually a bunch of people out there, so.
Well, I got to sign them up. I mean, last year, when was the last time, what was, we voted at something on the town, at the town hall, and must have been on midterm election last year.
Where was the rules, we had those rules for the new school district and all that, we voted on it.
Yeah, that was the merger thing, yeah.
Yeah, but we didn't vote, that was a ballot, but I remember the last time we had a big vote in the town hall, I think that was the midterm elections, and that was pretty miserable, we didn't have enough counters, but.
Right, that was a long night.
This will be easy counting, because it's just one name.
Yeah. We had like four tables, the last one, I counted out.
Yeah, we needed more.
And we had some rookies in there.
Right, exactly, I think it was count over and over again.
We had to count over, yeah.
Yeah, I don't care that was still there after.
Yeah, they were still trying to reconcile.
But it came out all right. After that election, Avram said he was going to try to come and convince us to go to electronic.
Hmm, no way. Too much weird stuff happens.
It's not, and it's not, yeah, it's not like it's going to be hacked or anything, because it doesn't go anywhere electronically. It's just the voter ballots go in the machine and they get counted, and then you, then you report them by email, but anyways, it's still too much.
It's a lot of money, too, to set it up, isn't it?
Yes, it is, and every year you have to pay like $500 with a special card for every election.
It's kind of nice to be a part of county.
Yeah.
Yeah, I always thought it was kind of fun, except the last year was, I was looking really late, I was one of the last ones, I was getting emails from Secretary of State's officer, "Are you all right?", you know?
We were.
Just so many weird things that happened.
Yeah.
We just took what happened last week.
Oh, my goodness, really. Yeah, we're not going to use, fortunately, we don't even have cell phone service at the town hall, so.
We do, just log into the party department.
Yes. Did learn that once.
Put your web.
Put our web, we'll put our password up there.
Exactly, we're in with a ballot clerk, I think, so I'll be telling her, Robin said she'd help, we're regular, we've got some regulars.
So let's do the easy one first, are you, are you all done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless you got any kind of.
Let's review the appointed elected town officials, let's do the appointed officials So I, and I have said that I will contact the folk, the appointed officials that are, due, the terms expire, just to see if they're willing to, and I'll do that this week.
I told you that I contacted Dave Bernhaus, and he said yes to vote.
I contacted Peter Pelson, he was going to check with the people on the Woodbury Fund Committee, and then.
Not much competition there.
If we are going to have a rail trail committee, could you contact the people that you, you know, think would, would want to be appointed? Sounds like we should have one after what.
Yeah, I think, I got ahold of Dan, he gave me a call back, and he's working on a group, you know, from Hardeham, Woodbury, so it's just going to be a combination.
So what we're basically trying to do is make sure that there's somebody willing to be there before town meeting, so the select board meeting immediately after town meeting, we can appoint everyone that needs to be appointed, so that there isn't a kind So that there isn't a kind of lap time return to find out. So as long as we know, you know, by town meeting who's, if the people that, whose terms are expiring are, are willing to continue or if not, then we, Laura will put a thing on the website. And I wanna get, try to have those names for her as soon as I can of appointments that are open. So people, if people wanna start looking.
Do you have any idea that Kim might not?
I don't, I don't, he hasn't said that yet.
About Sir Ruby's?
Yeah, we're...
They're appointed by the state, so that's, that's kind of...
I think it's a five-year term anyway.
So I'll, I'll contact Kim about the three, the three appointments that he has. The animal control officer, the dangerous buildings officer, and the town keeper. Um, and I'll contact, um, let's see, we're, so we've had one opening on the planning commission. So the planning commission will try to figure out who else might, we may have two openings, I don't know, we'll have to find that out. But, um, the planning commission will meet next week on Monday and we'll try to figure out if there's some new people that we need.
In his, in his planning commission report, Skip Lindsay seemed to assume that the planning commission should have nine people even though, because, because the statute said you can have up to nine. But I really think it's a select board's decision whether to increase from five to nine. He hasn't asked that, he just...
Well, yes.
The rail always struggled to get people.
I know, that's the thing, to get five.
We struggle to get five.
And you're not even a voting member, so, you know, so...
No, I shouldn't be, I shouldn't be.
Yeah, they had to increase it.
No, I, I don't, the statute says between five and nine. I don't think it's that you have to have the full amount, so...
Right, exactly, right. No, not mine.
So technically to, to, by state statute, to have a functioning planning commission, you have to have it as five. So, and right now, I don't know if we've lost two that are, I know we've lost one. So, and you know, with me as a select board member on the planning commission, you know, it's okay for a select board member to be there, but I should really be kind of, I can't remember the term.
It's official.
So that I technically don't vote.
Right, non-voting, yeah.
But I can participate, but, um, so, yeah. So the planning commission needs to come up with some appointments there. I'll check in with Bob Martin about being the zoning administrator for another year. And the zoning board of adjustment, I'll send a couple of emails to those folks.
I did, well, I called Mary, but she wasn't home last week. She was presiding, or she was presenting at some conference that we're out west.
Okay.
But Skip, I'm pretty sure he's willing to be reappointed.
Okay, I'll, I'll send them all, I'm gonna try doing the email route here first, just to see.
That's, well, you know.
It just saves me time, you know, with phone.
Well, sometimes a personal touch is nice too.
Well, that's true, but I'll, I'll make the email very personal.
Like, please, please, Mary's the only one I'm, I'm worried about.
I am willing to continue as the Central Mont Regional Planning Commission rep. We have the TAC committee rep is another regional plan. I think it's been vacant for a long time.
Nobody wants to do it in the town, if they do it, they'll probably wanna get paid mileage and that's, you know, money that is not well spent, I don't think.
It's a, it's a monthly trip to Montpelier. Uh, I'll contact Jane about the Central Mont's Hollow East District. The first constable is another long vacant spot. The planning commission is, has been talking a little bit about the energy coordinator. I'm willing to be in that role again. And, you know, we've been working on an energy component for the town plan. And that, the discussion about the energy, there is something in the energy plan about having, not, they don't call it a coordinator, they call it something else. But I think the person who was thinking of doing that is, has relied, so. And I'll let you and Brandy check with your assistants about appointing the assistant town clerk and assistant town treasurer. I'll check in with Chance about emergency management director, Skip about E nine-one coordinator, Ron about the tree warden. And, and then if you could check with folks for the rail trail, um, and, and we'll go, go from there, so...
I didn't, I didn't, oh, I did give you a, okay.
Yeah.
Up to date, although the, the copy that I have, I did add the rail trail before it went to print, but it doesn't make it on this copy.
Okay, yeah, I just wrote it right here too. So, um, for elected officials. So, um, Brandy, I assume that you're, and I'm gonna run for another term. It's gonna be my last term, nine years will be, will be enough.
That'd be nine years, huh?
Six years sorta feels like enough. But I'm willing to...
I wonder if, if you're gonna go for another round or not.
One more. But you, you know, it's kind of a learn as you go thing and it does seem, and there are things in the, of course, there'll probably always be things ongoing, so...
It will never end.
It will never end, but, and...
But still, I mean, you learn so much. In the first three years, you learn a lot and then you keep learning.
Not that all the learning is all that much. Something that you wanna learn.
Sometimes you know about it.
Yeah. So who is up as a lister?
Ron Wells.
Yeah, Ron Wells, okay. So, um...
Pretty sure he's planning to run again unless somebody else is out to get him.
So Jane was, Jane was up as the auditor and she has indicated that she...
She told me she was not gonna run, she was gonna finish her term at ten.
She wasn't planning to last year either and they got broke in again too.
And it sounds like we do have someone who's willing to take that on, so...
Be nominated.
Be nominated, yeah.
We need three.
Yeah, so...
Or at least two.
Well, our thinking is, you know, for the others, they still had time left in their terms.
We have to...
So the select board can appoint an interim person.
If we can find somebody, yeah.
So that's, that'll be, and actually, let me write that down, select board. So, um, so we'll work on that. Um, eloquent tax collector, um, I assume and Hope will run along.
He's doing a great job.
Yeah, he is.
He needs to start messing that up if he doesn't want that job.
And our grand juror and law agent probably be the, I mean, we can talk about this at the pre-town meeting too, but... So for the cemetery commissioner, I just wanna, I, I'm gonna contact the cemetery commission. And I just wanted them to make sure that they have somebody there to nominate someone.
Right, so we don't have what we had last year.
Yeah, so that what happened last year doesn't happen again.
Yeah, I know, Patty was there last year and she just wasn't paying attention.
I guess she had...
So did they fill the position?
No, somebody ran.
Somebody ran. Somebody ran.
Town meeting, Lee Sagerberg, and he's been trying to be involved, but there hasn't been that much to do and, and...
So they got a full crew right now?
Yeah, they are.
Someone who wanted to stay on apparently got off.
But somebody, somebody's term is up and who, you know, if they wanna continue and have a new term, the cemetery commission needs to know that, so there's somebody...
These are nominated.
Right, have somebody there, say so.
That's what happened last year.
Patty, Patty's the one who's up.
Yeah.
Patty Garbeck is up, so, she usually comes to town meeting.
And, um, as far as the library committee, they, they'll pretty much have a slate to nominate, do you think, or?
Yeah, we, we do have two that are resigning, um, so we're looking.
Okay.
Yep.
And is, in the, in the bylaws or whatever, is there a certain number that have to be on that committee or is there some?
Isn't it five still for the same, Diana?
Um...
And Hope's?
Yeah, the library has, has a whole separate set of statutes.
Right.
So, plus this library committee at one point many years ago made their, set some separate bylaws or maybe a charter, I don't know what it was called, but I don't know if anybody even knows where that is anymore. That's when they changed to have like staggered terms, not all three-year terms, one or some are two, some are one.
And then, Diana, are you usually the agent to...
Yeah, although I wasn't able to do anything. I was hoping I could sign the deeds for the store, but what's his name said, our, our, Paul said, "Well, you know, you better, I don't wanna make a good one."
Oh, come on.
Yeah.
He should've told, but...
Stole the thunder.
And, um, is Steve, or is it Steve whose term is up?
Steve is up, yeah, I'm, I hope, I hope he's gonna run again. I hope he'll run for moderator, I hope he'll run for moderator for the, oh, the, the Union District too.
Okay.
That was pretty nice of him actually getting the moderator for Union District of being hired, rick and a vote, and everything.
Yeah. Now, the, you know...
Should we contact him about that to make sure, or?
Call him and, you know, you can encourage him to run. I guess that's all you can do is say, "I hope you're gonna run again." He's the chairman there, so, I think he's being pretty well respected.
So as far as the moderator though, is that something, that would be something that the district board?
That's gonna be at the, uh...
At that, uh, eighteenth, February eighteenth?
Yeah, whatever the O S E U D, oh, right.
Yeah, the eighteenth meeting?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Where's that gonna be this year, elementary?
Hazen Elementary, yeah.
Yeah, they're having two meetings, I don't know why, but one of them is where their annual meeting where they'll elect the officers and there'll be election of board members. And then on the night before town meeting, they're having a meeting to discuss the budget. I don't know why they couldn't do them both at the same meeting, but, oh, well. Uh, and I don't know, I have to find out whether for that annual meeting, if I have to show up with a checklist and all that. Probably.
Probably, yeah.
I know, um, I was at, at the, I was at the O S E U D meeting last week.
Yeah.
And they, you know, they were discussing trying to how, how to get, um, you know, public publicity out about the two different meetings. And, um, I had mentioned that we had, the town has a website now, so I think, I'll re-contact Phoebe Slater. She was gonna send something to Laura to get it posted on the website. Yeah, so I'll remind her of that and, I think they were gonna...
I probably got copies of the warnings, but that's not always the best way to do things because the warnings kind of long. They just say, "This is the meeting."
Come vote.
Yeah, right. So last year we elected, um, Kim to a three-year term and Phoebe to a two-year term, but it's all different now. They're, um, Phoebe is up again for the Union Board and she is planning, she's planning on running. But, uh... Somebody has, it'll be, it'll be interesting. I think in another year or two, we'll be doing that all by Australian ballots, but all those meetings that we went to last year, that was decided for this year to do it from the floor. And I guess everybody gets to vote.
Yeah.
On everybody, so it'll be interesting. So what if Hardwick puts up two people and one of them nobody likes? Or people from other towns don't like them?
They actually have a vacancy, they have a vacancy right now for Hardwick, correct? So we try to find people to do that. Okay, so we'll check that off the list. So, um, personnel policy, um, so I made copies of my scratchings. I didn't, you know, as I reviewed it some more and got ready to type things in, I just realized I had more questions. It just seemed kind of futile to, to write, type it all in and then change it all again. So, um, so I made copies of my notes, um, just, yeah, so you guys could follow along and... Um, so I thought we'd just go page to page, kinda go through it and, and I had different questions and, and different things that I'd like to get input on.
Now, we have a personnel policy now, so it's kind of an update to it and...
This is the personnel policy that we have now. This is the most current version.
Is this June twentieth, is it June twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen?
Yes, yeah, it's the most current. So if, if we start it, and it's pretty much, um, my question is and the reason for kind of re-looking at the personnel policy has to do with the, you know, personal, the leave time, um, you know, just the time benefits. And also, you know, over the weekend, I started looking at the insurance and I just got a whole bunch of kind of red lights over that too, just with the wording. So, um, it's, it's about six pages worth of the personnel policy that I wanted to go through. So, um, one of the things that we talked about last time was to come up with a definition for a full-time employee and a part-time employee. So I just, you know, obviously full-time employee, we could define it as somebody working forty or more hours per week. I don't know if we need the or more or not, we could just have it as forty hours per week.
Or you can, or just say at least forty hours a week.
Yeah, okay.
Either way, whoever's people comfortable with.
Yeah, and, and then I wrote in a line which I don't think needs to be in the personnel policy, but we could have it in there. And it present applies only to the two town highway members working full-time.
Doesn't really need to be in there.
Yeah, yeah, as, okay. And then part-time, at first I thought, well, it would apply, it would apply to the two town highway part-time road crew members. And based on an average of twenty hours per week. And then in the personnel policy, there are times when the town clerk and town treasurer are being, being implied as the, and that's where you would see eighteen hours per week. See, it shows up more in the insurance side than in the, in the benefit side, the time benefit side. So, I mean, we could have, we could define a part-time employee as working eighteen hours or more per week.
Yeah, but we're not really employees, so I don't think you have to struggle with that too much.
Okay, all right.
We're elected, um...
Okay, so we'll, so we may wanna change some of that in the, when we're defining eighteen hours.
Is there anything statewide, Paul, do there's, do you know of any, where they break the line between a part-time employee or is it anything?
I think over thirty, I think...
So over thirty is where the, you become a...
Full-time.
Well, yeah, you're...
Eligible for insurance.
Yeah, yeah.
Where you got a lot of rules to kick in.
So under thirty, we'd...
Correct.
Okay, so... And we'll, we'll have, once we make these changes and we're happy with them, we'll have this vetted by...
The league review it.
Yeah, the L C T will review it and...
So the twenty hours a week is a good number then?
Yeah, so let's, let's stick with twenty hours, okay, so, all right.
Twenty for what, part-time?
For a part-time, that's how we'll average.
Less than twenty or?
Uh, twenty hours or more. Cause right, right now, we're kind of basing, the, the part-timers are definitely both averaging twenty hours a week, um, even in the summertime. So that seemed to be a good, a good number. We can make it less. But what we're trying to do is not have, you know, ballot clerks who work two hours.
Yeah, ballot clerks don't expect anything, yeah. Well, I don't even get paid.
I mean, I could drop it down to eighteen hours.
Well, how about Laura's, you only work eight hours?
Well, that's...
Twelve, you want a different category now, or?
Well, so far, so far, the assistant, assistant town clerk and the assistant town treasurer seem to be in their own separate category that has nothing to do with the personnel policy.
So they're, they're appointed, like, I mean, I appoint my assistant and Brandy appoint her assistant, so...
We, we could have it addressed in the personnel policy, or we could have it, have this special case. What I would like to do is have it, if even if, if it isn't addressed in a general way in the personnel policy, it would be good to have it written down as maybe a, an addendum in the personnel policy. So that there's something written somewhere that we can go by, so they're...
Right, that's what we should do, at least write down what we're doing.
Yes, yeah.
You mean, the only one of those, Laura's the only one that works a regular schedule, the others are all sort of on call as needed.
But we have in the past...
And they're getting benefits at a prorated rate already.
Well, in some ways, yes, and some ways not. That's the whole, that's part of why we're doing this. So I'll leave that up to you and Brandy. I know that Tom has, has, you know, there's been select board approved special things for him and same with Laura. If you guys wanna keep it that way, that's fine. It just would be nice to have it written down and stated in the current personnel policy. If you wanna try to cover someone like Laura who is working regular hours and have it be in the personnel policy, then we can try to make that happen too. So that would be up to you. And I don't know how, how you guys feel about that, if that would be...
To me, it's just longer to document and write down what we do, just so it's equal and fair, you know what you're doing.
Yeah, it's on, it's on paper so that we can remember what we did.
Yeah, that's the thing. Collective memory, you know, or...
Yeah, it's not good.
Oh, my God, we don't have enough posters for that.
And we're all getting older. So, um, so looking at the whole heading of leave time, the first thing that we come to is sick time. And it starts out, a full-time employee shall earn a hundred and twenty hours and then part-time employees are pro, based on a prorated basis. So, um, at this point in time, we have the two part-time road crew members and I'm kind of basing the prorating on the twenty hours a week that they kind of average, just for a figure to work from. And then it, it, under sick time, it defines the different categories that can be used as sick time. And then in my red scratches here, um, so it sounds like we'll, we'll not have the assisted, assistant town clerk and assistant town treasurer be considered as prorated under the part-time heading. That they'll have a separate category where all of the, the different benefits will be written out.
Yeah, I don't know what the deal is with Tom, but we should talk about it.
Tom doesn't receive any sick time, nor does he request it.
Okay, now, um...
But he gets something, right?
He gets vacation and he gets holidays.
In the wording for sick time, there is no mention of the town clerk or the town treasurer. But I assume that you do have sick time, so I would like something...
It's prorated.
Yeah, so it's prorated based on the number of hours you work for. Okay, so...
So annually, we get fifty-four hours for the part versus the hundred and twenty for a full-time.
Okay, so you get fifty-four hours. And that's based on how many hours working per week, eighteen hours? Okay, so...
And you can accrue up to two hundred and forty, but nothing over two hundred and forty.
Okay, got it, yeah. So, um, I'll, that'll be another line and understand.
In my opinion, there's a document what we're doing in the policy.
Is that in there already, Brandy? Is it somewhere?
No, it is not.
It's actually not.
It's not in there anyway.
That's what we were talking about, it's like this, let's just put down what we're doing.
Cause I know we have discussed this.
Yes, I know, so...
I can pull out the binder when I started, it was all done by handwritten, Marshall did it and, yeah, they were all receiving sick time.
Yeah.
So it just never made it into these conditions. So, um, on to vacation time. So, let's see, again, um, yeah, again, the town clerk and the town treasurer are not mentioned in vacation time.
Well, it says part-time shall earn prorated basis.
But at this point... But at this point, we're defining part-time as the two part-time road crew members who work 20 hours average per week. So I would like, again, like in sick leave, I would like to have it written in that.
Yeah, just write in what you're doing.
And the town clerk.
Just write it as it's.
But you could put a separate thing for elected.
Yeah, elected officials. Well, actually, no, it would just be.
Yeah, because then it gets complicated after.
Yeah, it's just town treasurer and town clerk. So is it on a prorated basis, based on the 54, based on 18 hours per week? And, okay, so we'll, and do you, is there anything kind of established about, you know, after one year, after three years, a certain amount of vacation?
Oh, it still goes, ever since I started, it still goes to the 1, 3, 5, and 12.
So you could reference that, I see, and then it would.
So that would be the number of hours.
This would be four.
Tom is the only that gets the 20 hours, that has maintained that for the last four years.
So when I go to write this in, I'll get the number of hours from you. So personal time, again, it's full-time employees, 24 hours of personal time per year. Part-time will be the two road crew members, basically 12 hours per year. The town treasurer and the town clerk are mentioned in this heading. So, and then there, in the second paragraph, it's, you know, it's, it says in the, in this heading that personal time does not accrue, but then it says any accrued but unused personal time. So my feeling is, is to cross out accrued and just use unused. So it would read, any unused personal time will be forfeited by the employee on June 30th of each year if not used. And then a short sentence saying, personal time does not accrue.
That's fine.
Okay, alright.
Reminded you said.
Okay. Just to make it a little clearer. So overtime, obviously, that's for full-time road crew members. Although, there are some kind of confusing things in here too. So let's just, so it says when, when a road crew member. So my wondering is, it says road crew only. So should we say, full-time road crew only, rather than road crew only, which would imply both full-time and part-time?
Correct.
So full-time would be better there?
And it saves the 40 hours.
Yeah, so. So that would help with all of the other stuff here that I was scratching and writing about. So when a road crew member is called in on Saturday or Sunday, obviously, full-time. And I'll say full-time every time, just so that there's no confusion. And then as far as.
That's still something that you think is fair and warranted? If somebody comes in for an hour, they get paid for three hours?
Yeah, that was the same question I would ask. If you're not going to pay the overtime rate, you'd still have the, you'd still have the three hours for a call-in on, even on a part-time guy, but it would be at straight time rates, right?
Well.
Potentially.
Yeah, I mean, the overtime, this whole issue on overtime would not, yeah, so would time. So we should probably have a clause there if a part-time, if part-time are called in, they would, would they receive time and a half or not?
Well, it doesn't look like you're paying them time and a half or anything else. Because they're not over the 40 hours. The question would just be become whether you're going to give them the three hours for coming in.
Right, yeah, that's always been a standard to.
It has been, because it sort of make you think, do I really need this?
Right, yeah.
Because if it's only a 15-minute job, I'm going to call them in. It makes them work, this person's while they come in.
I don't know, in the past, most of the guys have always tried to work as close to three hours as they can.
Usually, it's not usually a problem. Because, I know my state job's four hours, but I can't think of two. Basically, they called me in and I didn't work at least four hours.
And I know Greg has said that if, you know, if he called, if he goes in, you know, or if he calls folks in, then they do try to work, you know, they do work the full three hours.
Yeah, so what I would intend is.
So they don't just go down and cut one tree out of the road and get three hours.
Although they could, it's just.
They could.
That's, that's the issue. I think it should, if, you know, the intent is to, no problem with the doing with the full-time, it's just the part-time, I think the intent should be the same. They get their three hours, but it's at straight time rates.
Yep.
So, so what about the part-timers? Do, you know, do we just pay them their hourly rate?
Yeah, because I don't say you can pay them overtime because you're not over 40 hours.
So they would get a minimum three hours no matter.
They've got a minimum of three hours.
On their base pay.
And that's not, that's if you're called in, not if you're scheduled. Like if we're scheduling someone to come in on Saturday for a special day, that doesn't.
But for anybody who, but the full-timers, if they get called in on Saturday or Sunday, they not only get a minimum of three hours, but it's always on one and a half time. Even if they haven't put in their, well, I guess you're assuming that they have put in their 40 hours.
That's, that, what you mean by is call-in, it's not, it's not a.
Yeah, because they're going to put their 40 in every week unless they're on vacation or out sick or something, but.
So.
I imagine these trees fall in hole in the road, washout type thing where you got to commit extra and all of a sudden.
Yeah.
So I'll put the same clause in for the next paragraph.
For compensatory time, yeah.
Well, no, for working beyond the regular.
Because we're not paying part-time overtime.
No.
What's the difference between a road crew member and a non-exempt employee?
Well, I had to look all that up when we had the issue with Harry and. A non-exempt employee is basically someone who's not on salary.
Right, they're not major.
Certainly. They're not major, right.
Best LA employees.
Yeah, there's a whole, it's a.
Oh, okay, so like.
It's defined in the federal labor law.
Right, there's certain, there's certain jobs, they tried that with my job. They tried to say I was a, not, I was an exempt employee and then after a year, they had to go back and fix it.
Right, and that's what we did with Harry. We said that he was an exempt employee.
Because it was illegal. It was illegal.
And according to the labor laws, no.
You can't do that.
So he was owed.
There's lots of little trick, little place you can get in trouble if you're not careful, certain.
So then the last paragraph under overtime, any work on a federal, state or federal holiday will be compensated at one and a half times the employee's regular rate of pay. And then if the, if the part-timers are there on a holiday, they would get the holiday, their prorated holiday time plus the hours that they worked.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're saying that they would get the time and a half?
Yeah, say if they came and, say it was President's Day. President's Day or whatever, and so they, there would be a prorated amount of holiday pay that they would get for that. And then they worked three hours, so they would get the prorated holiday time, hours, and they would also get the three hours that they worked.
But straight time?
Straight time, yeah, it would be straight.
Okay, so you're going to, because the way that looks now, it's in and.
Yeah, so I'll fix the wording on that.
That's what we're doing now, right? They get straight time. I just want to make sure we're carefully documenting, actually do it. I'm not intending to add or to take away anything.
So I'll designate that between full-time and part-time. Okay, so now on to comp time. And again, the comp time and, let's see, would be again for full-time road crew only, because it basically is dealing with a different way of.
Right, it's one and a half, yeah, you said that you get time.
So I don't think we'd have to change anything else under compensatory time, comp time.
Do these guys take comp time?
They hard, they do sometimes, yeah.
Greg does, the park, uh, Griz.
Griz.
So how time do you also get 1.5?
Yeah, you get an hour and a half for each hour.
Yeah.
If it's time that you would have.
Would have charged overtime for, yeah, or been paid overtime for. So in that comp time, it says, part-time employees will receive prorated holiday pay based on the number of hours employees regularly scheduled to work on that holiday. So.
Where's that?
It's in, it's on page, the top of page 13, but it's part of comp, comp time. I'm not really sure why. It should be maybe under holiday pay. I think we should, I guess we should move that over to holiday pay, shouldn't we? Doesn't seem like it's, there's more holiday stuff over here on page 13. It seems like it should be under holiday time, which I just, so that whole, so. So, so we're back on holiday time, I guess. Part-time employees will receive prorated holiday pay based on the number of hours the employee is regularly scheduled to work on that holiday. So I have, you know, I have a question about this. I'm wondering if we should just, you know, the two part-time road crew members, it is sort of set up that one part-time member works Monday and Tuesday, the other one works Wednesday and Thursday, and sometimes they switch off Fridays. I wonder if we should just have it be that they get a prorated for every holiday, whether or not they work on the day that, I mean, whether it would be a day. It just, it could be very confusing. I worked, I worked that out somewhere. Oh, where's the holiday part here?
So for instance, 4th of July is on Saturday this year.
Right.
Do the road crew still get their eight hours of?
So the road, full-time people would.
They should, yeah.
Yeah, because it says, it does say that. Holidays falling on a Saturday will be observed the preceding Friday. So they could take that Friday off.
Or they should, yeah.
Yeah, they should, that's what they should do.
And they would get the full holiday pay.
If it's on a Sunday, you'd celebrate the holiday on Monday.
Monday, yeah, so.
You can't just put in for time and a half because it's over your 40 hours.
Right, so part-timers, you know, like, some of them work on Monday, some of them work on Wednesday, Thursday, and there are some holidays that, you know, like New Year's Day, Independence Day, Christmas, you don't really know what day it's going to fall on, changes. I'm wondering if we should just have kind of a blanket thing where for the holidays, the part-time employees receive a holiday benefit pro, based, you know, on the prorated 20 hours a week. So they would basically get half a day's holiday pay for each holiday.
For each of them.
For each of them, yeah.
That seems like the fairest way to do it.
Fairest and easiest.
Yeah, well, yeah, because if not, it's like, well, he got three holidays, I only got one, and yeah, I think I like that.
I think I want to work on that Monday.
Tom gets two hours every holiday.
Okay, yeah.
Laura gets the holiday if it's a day that she was planning to work, scheduled to work if it's a Monday holiday, she gets four hours.
I like that.
Okay, so what I would say there is part-time, holiday, prorated, based on number of hours. And at this point, it's 20. So basically, it'd be a half a day. Four hours. Actually, they work nine hours, but let's say, let's call it four hours.
Yeah, because as of now, the full-time road crew, it's eight hours per holiday. It's not nine, what they typically work.
Right, yeah, correct.
Okay, so then, this is more holiday stuff. Employees required to work on a designated holiday will receive time and a half. So again, that should be full-time.
Right, full-time.
And then part-time, regular base pay. And then holidays that fall during an employee's vacation leave will not be charged as vacation.
That's fine, yeah.
Yep, so that's true. Okay, so that's the.
Will not be charged.
That's the time. So, so I have just a bunch of questions with the insurance and maybe just.
So we're good, we missed page 12. You have any questions on 12?
Did I miss page 12?
Yeah, we skipped over because we.
Okay, yeah, I've got.
Because we fixed the holiday for Martin Luther King. It looks like we changed President's Day, Washington's Day to President's Day.
So, and you added Martin Luther King?
We did, we did that at the last meeting.
Yeah, so Martin Luther King's been added.
The day after Thanksgiving is always a Friday, which we don't work, so.
And that's on there.
But ours is off to floaters.
Right, so that would be, that's kind of a floater for either another day with Christmas or another day with Thanksgiving, yeah.
Well, we had changed it to the day after Christmas, but it's hunting and it always has been in, in the policy, the day after Thanksgiving.
For the road crew, it should be.
It should stay that way for the road crew, that they get the Friday after Thanksgiving off because it's still hunting.
Yeah, could we, could we make it optional that, you know, have Thanksgiving and Christmas and then optional to have another holiday connected to either Christmas or?
That's kind of the way it is with a floating holiday.
Yeah, so we'll put a, we'll put a, I'll make a line for that.
Usually a floating holiday works, they assign you eight hours of comp time and then you use it whenever you want.
Yeah, we sometimes do that on other holidays, like, you know.
If it's on a Friday, use it.
Labor days, a Monday, or Veterans Day, or some holidays that if you have to work, you have to do, choose to work on that day and take another day off.
And that only applies to town clerk, treasurer, and the garage people.
Unless, you know, there's something different stated from the town clerk and the town treasurer. Employees will receive holiday pay at the employee's regular rate of pay. And road crew employees may count holiday paid towards hours actually worked, which is different from the other.
And that's how you calculate your overtime, so if you have a holiday on a Monday and you work extra on Friday.
Right.
It's counted as hours worked, so you can.
Yep.
Whereas if you took personal time, sometimes.
Sick, well, like for the state, sick time is not considered hours. If I take, took today off sick, I can't say I worked two hours actually yesterday.
Oh, vacation.
Vacation annually is considered hours actually worked, usually.
Really?
You know, for us, personal time, compensatory time, and what's the other one? Comp time, personal, and it'll leave as all considered hours actually worked.
So do we cover, I think everything else is okay on page 12.
Yeah. Did we change the holiday?
Yep.
Add one, or you've changed the name on something.
So I'll move the, actually, okay, that's where my confusion came from. The holiday stuff was under holiday time.
It was, the page was just messed up.
Yeah, see, I have two sides, and you guys have one.
Yeah, I was in one, yeah.
Yeah, so that was my own confusion.
We weren't being very paper-friendly.
Okay, so, so the insurance. And my first question was, you know, who receives, who receives this? And who receives what under the insurance benefits and?
Every town clerk, town treasurer, and the two-town road crew members.
No, the treasurer don't get any.
So you don't get anything, okay.
We can pay ourselves if we want to.
So it's just the two road crew members then?
Yes, that have me off, yeah.
Yeah, and only one takes it.
So, yeah, provisions of, so under health insurance, so let's start with insurance benefits. Town offers group insurance programs for the benefit of its eligible employees. Should we define?
Well, it sounds like it's just the two road crew members.
Full-time, yeah, it needs to just say full-time.
Let's say to its full-time employees, that's what it should say, good point.
So not eligible or full-time.
So one of them takes the insurance, you have one takes.
Yeah, and there's other clauses.
You work offering it, they don't have to. Generally, you work a deal, I'm assuming you're, you got something for not taking it.
Yeah, and that's, that's in here under the subheadings, yeah. So the town reserves, okay, so that's all kind of. So with health insurance, provisions of this subsection relating to health insurance shall apply to the town clerk and town treasurer. And I had a question mark under there.
Can I just say that?
Do you have the option?
If we wanted to pay ourselves out of pocket, we could on the plan.
Okay.
It says if you worked at least 30 hours a week, they'll pay, the town will pay some.
Yeah.
Or you could opt in, yeah.
Provided the income, okay, so.
So I think you're doing what it says, right?
I don't think, yeah, but I don't think we can just opt in and pay our own. Does it say that?
The 30 hours a week, which potentially equals.
So it does kind of, you know, the word provided pretty much sets a term, criteria for that. So if you work at least.
It has to go the amount of equivalent hours you worked, right.
I think that was in there, in case, you know, in the past, there have been times where the town clerk and the town treasurer have been the same person and probably were working 30 hours.
Right.
So, and then I wasn't sure, and Brandy can confirm this, but I don't think we were doing a health and reimbursement account anymore. So that whole, rest of that paragraph should be basically struck from the personnel policy. So, and then that final paragraph under helping. So then, the next section is health insurance premium assistance. And I know that Greg Parkers.
Right, which is where you're paying some of the, or all of the, what are you paying? I got you, so they're getting a benefit.
Yep.
Not enough, but.
And then while, while we're doing that, while we're going through this. And then, while we're doing that, while we're going through this...
I don't know what it is.
Not equivalent at all.
Providing you guys with, there's an appendix that kind of tells what the different benefits are that the town is now giving, so it'd be good to have that pulled out. It's kind of the last page of... Hang on, I'm getting a post-cold meltdown here.
The last page of our little thing?
Yeah, there's an appendix two, I think it's two pages, so the last two pages.
We call it annex, now that's the most possible.
So, this helps to kind of follow along. So, under health insurance, in the appendix two, we should probably change, we no longer have the Vermont Health Connect Platinum Plan, so we should probably change that. But we're still paying eighty-five percent of the MBBP plan, whatever, whatever it is. So, then, under health insurance premium assistance, after reading the appendix, I realized we probably should have checked in with Greg Parkhurst to see if there were any changes coming for his, the health insurance that he has under his...
Right, it says we're supposed to be looking at this annually in November.
Yeah, in November.
There's no reason to have that hundred and eighty-five dollars per month in there.
No, that's, that's old, that's not, that's not in the, that's not in the current one. That's why, and that's what this addresses, where the select board should annually re-review with Greg Parkhurst if his health insurance, the amount that his wife is paying for him to be on, her health insurance has increased, then the town will make that change.
Right.
And he didn't say anything to me or Brandy about it, but I'll check in with him about that. Because I should have done that.
So, do you need to have this stuff about...
You're looking at it actually in the older...
Yeah, you're looking at, oh, yeah, it's all not in there.
So, dental insurance. Town pays premium costs of dental insurance for employees and their dependents. And then, it does say employees must work a minimum of eighteen hours per week. And this was put in here so that the town clerk and the town treasurer would be eligible. So, I assume that...
So, are two part-time?
Yeah, so, again, that brings up the issue, so, under the way it's worded now, so would the part-time employees. So, we can change the wording to designate that the town clerk and the town treasurer receive this benefit, or we could leave it as is and include the two part-time road crew members.
What would be the cost?
That's what we would have to research. So, this is kind of a question.
So, I usually leave that as a question mark right now.
Okay, so, leave it as a question.
Because we're not, they don't have this benefit now, right?
They do not have that fringe, no.
We do need to research. And Brandy, would you be willing to do that, to just find out what...
Oh, yeah, I can get your numbers right now.
Well, let's not worry about it right now. So, we'll look into this, and then, would we, because they're part-time? Well, actually, you know, if they're working pretty much the same number of hours as the town clerk and the town treasurer, I guess prorating them and not prorating... So, that's another question.
Okay, so, in these areas, you're going to have to call out the positions, or you're going to have to do it equally.
Yeah, exactly, right, so we would either have to prorate for everyone if we, or we would pay the full. And then, the vision plan, it doesn't, for employees and their dependents and employees, for the cost of the deductible, and it doesn't mention whether the town clerk and the town treasurer get this or not.
The one I have here is that the provision of the subsection relating to the vision plan shall apply to the town clerk and the town treasurer.
This one says.
Okay, all right.
The town papers plan for employee...
And that, that's in yours?
Yeah.
That's not in mine?
Yeah.
Oh, under the health thing here, okay.
Under our vision plan, yeah.
Okay, so, all right, okay, I forgot to look over this side.
I have chosen not to take it.
Okay, so...
I don't get anything else, so I take that.
Okay, so, again, you know, should this be offered to the part-time?
Well, I think this question goes back to the number of hours again. I think it should, that twenty-hour or eighteen, wherever you have it be.
Yeah, we just can't, for three hours.
We just want to get away from this piecemeal of the certain amount of hours.
Yeah.
Or name the positions that you intend to pay. So, again, that would stay in the question. We need to find out what that would cost and see what we want to do. Because they're not doing it right now, I take it.
Vision is nine oh six...
Per employee.
As long as it's single.
Got you, okay.
Yeah, once you start getting into family plan, that's...
We'll have to discuss that one.
Something for a double, right?
That's going to get expensive pretty fast.
So, should we have that stated in, whatever we decide? Should we have it stated in the actual personnel policy also? And it's stated in the appendix, but it's not stated in the actual personnel policy.
It should.
It should be, okay, so, whatever...
No, it is, well, you know, this section's here, my page fourteen had dental insurance and vision plan.
Yeah, but that's, that's not the current copy that you...
Okay.
So, whatever we decide should be here. Stated.
You took that out?
Uh, yeah, I guess so, and we never noticed it. So, life insurance. So, provisions of this section shall apply to, I kind of wrote in, full-time town employees and to the town clerk and town treasurer, provided the incumbent is regularly scheduled to work at at least eighteen hours per week. So, again, this, this brings up...
Well, it almost seems like we're not doing it now. If we wanted to just reflect what we're doing, I think you could leave that language the way it is because it calls out the positions, except...
Take out the eighteen hours.
Take out the eighteen hours, just call out the, that would save us, because it looks like it'd get really expensive really fast, so...
Yeah, and it does seem kind of crazy to offer life insurance to a part-time employee.
So, just say we'd offer to the full-time employees and the town clerk and the town treasurer. That would be the easiest thing, I think, in all of those.
Yeah, I agree.
Because that's what we're doing right now, and that just keeps us status quo.
Yeah, yeah, the subs could really...
Then we won't get caught up in the hours, just, you've got a part-time job, and that's just...
Yeah, so, what I'll do, the next two paragraph sentences under life insurance, I'll just flesh out employees to say full-time employees and the town clerk and town treasurer.
Yeah.
All right.
That would simplify that.
Yeah.
Same thing with the disability.
Disability.
Disability should be the same thing.
Yeah.
Because, again, I just intended to just reflect what we're doing.
Right, the incumbent is regularly scheduled to work at least seventeen and a half hours.
Yeah, I don't know how that, where that came from.
Yeah, I don't know where that came from, yeah.
So, same as...
A lot of times, these change to correct a specific problem, and then the problem's gone, and you don't remember what was done.
There was a reason why it was...
Yeah, I'm sure there was a reason.
It was something, I think it was...
You don't get a number like seventeen point five without there being a reason.
Okay, so, retirement, that's the last one we're going to worry about. Retirement benefits are only available to full-time employees...
Town clerk, town treasurer.
And town clerk.
I don't think you get any retirement.
And retirement is tricky with them because...
What line is it on for retirement here?
It's M, it's on page fifteen.
Yeah, it's not on mine either.
I haven't got retirement, that's why I'm not...
It's not, it's not on the appendix.
Okay, well, fifteen, all right, I see what you're saying.
And if you're, I think for the municipal employee retirement program, it's probably pretty...
It's pretty, pretty specific.
Yeah, and you know, retirement is tricky for an elected official because, you know, they're, they're kind of, their work is dependent on getting re-elected every...
Yeah.
And it says a minimum of twenty-four hours per week on a regular basis. So, I think we should just leave that.
Just put full-time employees?
Yeah, just, I think just leaving it the way it was, probably.
Okay.
Are the full-time, I think they are...
They work at least, they at least work twenty-four hours. I bet that's right out of the policy for the retirement, I guess.
Okay, all right, so we'll leave it as is.
It's another one of those numbers that I'm sure didn't come out of nowhere.
Yeah, okay.
I would leave it as it is.
Okay, so that's, that's pretty much it, so...
So, I don't think there's any review to do then as far as money, because I think we fixed the part we're worried about.
Okay, so we'll do the research on the dental insurance and the vision plan.
Well, we don't even need to do that, we're going to switch that to just call out the employees. Full-time town employees, town clerk, town treasurer, is that what we decided?
Oh, no, we didn't decide that on those two.
We did on the other two.
We did on the other two.
That's what I'm thinking on all of them.
On all of them?
Right, because I don't think our focus here was to add a benefit. It was mostly to document what we were doing.
Yes, to, yeah, and just to change any problems.
So, if somebody wants to add a benefit, we would need to have a conversation.
So, the sick and personal time, the part-time employees are going to start, the part-time highway crew are going to start receiving sick and personal time.
Yes, and vacation?
They already have vacation.
Okay, and holiday, and the...
Sick, personal, and holiday.
Sick, personal, and holiday.
Prorated, the four hours.
When do you want to have that start? First of the year, or, I mean, first of fiscal year?
What's easiest for you to calculate it?
Well, yeah, we need to...
Well, no, you guys have to make a decision.
It has to be vetted, I mean, I'll make the changes, we'll review it again and approve the changes.
Because they're not currently getting those, so we could have it, give us some time. It could be a next fiscal year, July first.
Could be the next fiscal year.
Yeah.
In any case, it should be after town meeting because there are changes.
I like, I'd like to maybe the start of the...
Fiscal year, okay. I'm fine.
Well, they're not budgeted for...
I know.
You'll have this whole way.
But I think, I think, I think we'll be able to take a little bit from the...
I'm ready, tax rate is more than last year.
Yeah, they'll try to keep it there.
You saved us a little money so you could spend some more, right?
I think there'll be a cushion in the overtime that we have budgeted.
No, no, after this week, it's not today's.
Well, while the snow starts melting, we'll be fine.
See, it depends on what winter does.
That groundhog thing, yeah.
But we had, we had a cushion from last year, and last year, there was a lot of overtime, so, okay, so let me...
But we got to review it, besides, yes, it's exactly what we want to do, so...
So, this is one thing...
If you can get it typed up, then we'll go over it.
I could get this typed up, and if we wanted to have, you know, I could send it to you guys. You could just look at it. I could also send it to VLCT to have them review it before. Actually, they probably won't, my guess is they might not have time to do that. When I talked with them today, you know, they're kind of maxed out with town meeting day coming up, so...
Well, that, payroll audit, so I got my audit next week.
So, chances are, they might not be able to review it in a couple of weeks.
That's why we did that.
Yeah, because there's no huge...
I think if you get it to them, they probably make the most sense. I think we should review it at the next meeting.
Okay, so I'll make the changes.
And then, we can send it to them, get it the way we like it.
Get it first, yeah.
Well, if we look at it, we like it, then we send it to them, and then they'll tell us we're all wet.
So, would you like me to make the changes by crossing out things that we have changed and then have it written in there?
Usually, what you'll do is you just put a line through what you're taking out, so you can still read it, and then add, just add the next piece of language in parentheses.
So, you're getting better with Microsoft Word, you find that...
Oh, yeah, I get all that stuff.
What you want to do is just, you just want to strike through what we're taking out where you can still read it.
Yeah, no, that's, that's...
Yeah, I like that.
If you want to be really nice to us, highlight the new language in yellow.
Oh, yeah, we don't know what color printer, so forget it.
I like to highlight in red, and it will show up on your...
I tried the highlighting in black magic marker, but that's probably why I didn't do well in college.
Couldn't they, couldn't they print one off of the printer?
Actually, if you highlight in yellow, it'll show up gray when it's on.
Yeah, it'll show up gray, yeah.
I have, my printer will print it.
That just helps pop it out of your face. I know I do a lot of state rules, and we got to strike through, then you got to put the added language, so you can still read the old language.
I'll tell you what, I will, I'll, for just these few pages, I can highlight it in another color, and I will print it out on my printer, which also prints a different color.
Your coloring dries out if you don't use it after a while, anyway.
And then, I'll charge the town a huge bill for my ink.
Yeah.
We can donate you this color printer.
Oh, really?
As long as you don't have to lose ten.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's defunct, too bad, I hardly get it used.
All right, we're through that.
We're through that, thank you. Okay, so, now I've lost my...
Okay, we're on highway.
Okay, there isn't much to...
As far as a dog complaint, did you, was anybody contacted to...
I've got, that's, that's part of, yes, that's part of the updates and follows up. It's on the agenda.
Okay, were the people involved invited to come because it's a hearing?
No, no, because the hearing hasn't happened yet, so...
Oh, okay, okay.
When it will happen, and how it will happen is...
It was understood it was a dog one, I didn't hear about that, I guess.
That was when Kim came before us.
So, is this dog?
Yeah, and he wanted to have a closet, we'll get to it, it's on the agenda. So, there isn't much under the town highway report, I just, these are, the old quarry road spur is basically an update. I sent an email to our town lawyer, Michael Tarrant, just wondering how he's doing on the, you know, the determination or whatever you call the thing.
Official finding.
Findings, yeah.
We don't want to, are we, still have plenty of time?
We're at thirty days now, so...
I mean, we get to this, yeah.
He said he would have it to us by the end of the week.
Okay, so we'll have it for the next meeting. So, we could make it an official decision by the next meeting, potentially, okay.
Yeah, so we'll have, we'll have...
Get that done, so we can move on to whatever's going to happen next.
Yeah, I did mention to him that I wanted it, you know, well within the sixty days, so... So, we'll have that for our next lightboard meeting. So, the winter operations letter to our One Wisteria resident, do you think, it's, I haven't heard anything at all.
Let's not...
It seems quiet, it seems like a moot point.
I got a complaint in the height of the nastiness, and I just said, look, I had spoken with Greg Friday, they were out twice at least on Friday. So, they're doing what they can do, it's, it's the middle of a snowstorm, sorry.
And they did stay late into the day.
Yeah, they did.
And then they were out first thing Saturday night, that was...
So, I had told them, I had talked to Greg, and I said, they went out, and they went by my house at six-thirty or six or something Friday night, and that complaint came out, and I said, that's all they can do.
Right, yeah. Okay, so let's just, we'll let that, that one fall through the cracks. And then, you know, just, I don't really have much to update, I mean, obviously, it was a pretty busy...
Yeah.
Weekend, I know that they did, there was another repair on one of the ten-wheelers to one of the...
It's a spring broke.
The spring broke out.
You saw the email I sent? Friday I sent, you know, you might have signed it. And they worked on a spring, I guess it was going to...
Greg, Greg pointed out to me Friday, they, they brought the truck in Sunday. There was a spring that had broken during the summer that they repaired, and then the other side, the same spring broke, so it's been repaired. They were hoping to be able to get it back today, I don't know whether they did or not.
They had to send that out?
Yeah, they had to bring it to Charlie Boys.
Yeah, springs and stuff like that, Charlie Boys is a long ways away.
Yeah, McLeod's is, I think they're using, I think he said it was going to McLeod's today.
Was it?
Pretty sure it's McLeod's.
It's twenty miles instead of...
Because I talked to Greg...
I didn't know where, I didn't know where it was going, but I knew that they were...
Yeah, stuff like that, I hope that they...
Yeah, McLeod's will do it, we, we started using it at the firehouse, it's been good for us.
Yeah, so maybe they do.
So, things, if we want to pass on, I can send an email if you wanted to tell me. We need to dig out the island at the, in front of the town hall.
Okay, you know, I did, I called the...
Somebody's still plowing snow up there.
I called the post office person, and she said that it's the town road crew that's doing that.
Okay, so they need to stop it, because somebody just did it the last storm, so.
Okay, okay.
And if we can get those guys to go down and dig that out, get that snow out of there, you can't see over it, and it's starting to creep out where you can't get in tough to get the.
Yeah, I noticed.
That entrance is going.
So dig out the exit.
So it's mainly just the center section.
Yeah, so what the road, the state highway doesn't want us plowing the snow up against the island and the, because what happens when he hits it with the wing, it's blowing it all back in, filling it in, and then what it's doing is over time is it's building that snow out, and the road entrance gets narrower and narrower. The third problem is you can't see. Those banks get so high, you can't see to get out, so it really, they should, they just push in, and I think we can fix it just by taking the loader, clean it up, and then future, just don't, don't push.
I think Greg did go down with the loader once.
Didn't he, didn't he?
Yeah, done.
We had a lot of snow.
After the snow.
Yeah, they're down there with the loader and all skating rink, just bust in there.
Bust that road out.
Bust that road open a little bit for them too.
Yeah, no, I had the thought, you know, they plow a certain distance. They could plow right down to the skating rink.
If they could plow to the right of it straight by.
Yeah, that's what they, someone Ronnie had done it.
Well, what they're, yeah, what they're trying to do is, you know, kind of go some to the right, some to the left, so there isn't a lot of snow left where the, you know, to access the speed.
I'd really like to have them clear that trail all the way down there.
Yeah, somebody had plowed it with a truck, maybe it was wrong, all the way down.
I had a tractor over there once too, and cleaned up some stuff for him once, but.
That'd have been you also, you know. I cleared it up Saturday morning with my snow pusher.
Yeah, it was gonna, there's some nice days, so if one of those guys wants to hop on the loader and just run around and.
I mean, we could ask them to plow, just kind of try to have it open all the way down to the rink. I'm sure they would be.
There's enough room to go right down past the rink and keep that open for people.
I don't know if the snowmobile people would get mad if there's a big snowbank now.
Well, I, yeah, we'd want to put it, because there was a.
Well, there's no other place to put it.
Or you can't go around it and then go to the left, not in the skating rink.
Not if you go right down to the rink. There's just that, I mean, you could push it some to the right, but.
Well, we can go down there with the loader too, and the loader can just move it. We have a nice big loader.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so maybe seeing if they would be willing to plow down to the rink.
It's a fair amount of use.
Or use the loader, yeah, because that's, I want to make it easy, because I'm letting, we're letting them use the hoses and the water to the firehouse.
Yeah.
This seems popular, so we're gonna make sure they can facilitate that. And you may want to look at when the road warms back up, is Greenwood Lake Road's got that heavy mealie like Cabot Road has on it.
Oh, that's.
The other day, it was really bad, so.
Salted snow type.
Yeah, they just, if they can, it's not till it warms up a little, but you know, get over there with the grader, maybe cuff that off. It's, it's, it's got ruts, it's bad.
So County Road along Greenwood Lake?
Well, no, the Greenwood Lake Road, from there to County Road. I don't know, I haven't been down, but.
So Route fourteen down.
From Route fourteen to County Road is pretty bad on the hill. It's all rutted and the corner, the corner by Lord's is all rutted. And I think if they got the grader in there and did the same thing and just graded it down as hard as they could and took a loader, a truck behind them and pushed it back. It's just, I went through with my truck, and one wheel gets in one rut, and one gets in the other. The other Friday, it was soft. That was the complaint. I guess somebody got stuck. Their car bottomed right out in it.
Oh, wow.
So that's what I'm saying, if they, if it warmed, it's supposed to warm up some this week, they get over there, it'd be the same thing as Cabot Road, it's just different kind of for the, the lower cars are dragging.
Yeah, they may, they may want to hit Cabot Road too over there.
Yeah, just, that's the thing for those sunny, warm days, is get out there and start tearing, tearing that stuff up.
Should be getting some of those pretty.
Use the wing to push the snow way back and.
This week, I think.
Yeah, it's supposed to be.
Tomorrow and Wednesday are supposed to be.
Because it was twenty below zero on Saturday. It was frozen.
And then this coming weekend, it's gonna be back.
Yeah, back to Thursday. But anyways, it's for stuff, list of stuff if they got time to throw someone on that loader and had it, and the grader, just to go out and do that.
Yep, okay. So, update some follow-ups. The, I should have written down what this thing's, the VORAC grant for the wetland dock that we approved the application for. Elizabeth and I met with the Orleans Southwest Elementary Union District Board, and they gave the town permission to put the dock on there. I didn't bring up anything else. I had talked to one of our district reps earlier, and they felt it would be best just to keep it to one thing. So the other subject that I had mentioned last week about, you know, approaching the district board about transferring that piece of property that is deeded to them, to the town, we'll save that for a later date.
Okay.
Now, do they need any special permits to put a dock in a wetland like that?
Elizabeth has checked with all that's been.
That's been interesting.
I'm sure they need some.
So that's, that's all.
Can you go back and say what was verified?
So the, the Union District Board, Elementary Board, voted to give the town permission to place the dock on the, on their property. So basically, the dock will go where the other dock used to be.
So you're using the school's tax ID, or you're using our tax ID?
It's a town project. It'll be paid for through the town. So everything, you know, it's not gonna cost them anything. It's all through the town, so it would be the town ID. They're, they're just allowing the town to put this thing on their property.
But the backup, the insurance and everything, the school's gonna be providing that?
It would be the same as what's, for everything else that's there on, on the grounds.
And we'll have to be paying upfront until we get reimbursed?
Well, we haven't even made it through the first step of the, so this, this is well into the future.
Okay.
Yeah, but it probably, most of these grants are reimbursement grants, which would mean yes, would pay upfront. I, it might happen in fiscal year twenty-one, if we're, if we're lucky.
Oh, really?
Well, I think, well, I don't want to be a pessimist, but yeah, probably. So the village stormwater master plan final design contracts. So the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission finally received, the contracts were signed with the Department of Environmental Conservation for them to pursue the final designs for the four village sites, all four sites. So that means that they'll be putting out an RFP soon to, for contractors to put in bids to create the final designs.
Okay.
So we're no longer waiting for DEC to kind of pick up and, and get their act together. They have signed contracts with the Regional Planning Commission, so now they can proceed on, on getting the contracts for the final designs. So that, we should see some action on that pretty soon. Hopefully by spring, they will have picked their contractors, and we'll know who will be creating those final designs. And I'm hoping that for the final designs, for the, the school wetland basin and for the infiltration basin that would be behind the annex building, that we can have that person give us their two cents on the.
The road design.
Road prep, because the, the Better Roads Grant is based on.
One shouldn't include the other, so.
Right, is, is based on. So, the nuisance dog hearing. I talked to VLCT today, and I will send you the email. It came at the nth hour, so I didn't want to send it to you guys today, but I will send it to you later on tonight or first thing tomorrow morning. I spoke with Sarah Sanning. She's one of the VLCT consulting lawyers. And she, first of all, a quasi judicial hearing, at this point, it's basically just a nuisance dog. It's not a vicious dog that's bitten anybody. If it was a vicious dog, then the quasi judicial hearing.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I have to let you know that there has been a complaint that the dog has attacked another neighbor's dog repeatedly.
Okay, well, I wasn't aware of that, but.
Has that person filed the complaint with the dog warden?
Uh, no, she called here last, I think it was Thursday, and I told her there was gonna be a meeting about it.
That should get documented by proven why.
Yeah, I should, I should have called it into Kim.
Yeah, because if we're gonna go there, we just want to make sure it's carefully documented of what, what it was, when it happened, who it happened to.
You know, and I talked with Kim yesterday about this to get a better sense of what, why he's, what his issues are with the, with this dog owner and dog. But anyway, the, the person from VLCT felt that what we should do is basically follow the procedures spelled out in our domestic pet nuisance control ordinance first. And we should follow this, but we really, and there's nothing in the ordinance about a hearing at all. So what we should do is follow through the letter of the ordinance, and I think Kim has pretty much done that. So, but we need to kind of check in with Kim about that, so.
Yeah, find out if he's got word of this last.
Right, so the thing we want to do is, he should probably come to the next meeting with his findings, but he should also document this complaint that Dan just integrated.
So what we'll do is, we'll meet with Kim at our next select board meeting.
Have him get this complaint.
Yeah, his documentation, what he's done, and then, and then we'll figure out where to go from there. Probably confer with VLCT again, or it could be just, you know, that we could do this at a select board meeting. She did mention that the ordinance is kind of slim and outdated. They have a model ordinance that they have. I know that Skip worked on the ordinance with Kim a couple of years ago after the horse got killed in the village.
Oh, yes, yeah, horse, I remember this one.
It was kind of like to deal with other domestic pets that aren't dogs or cats, or specifically dogs. I don't know if they ever got an end result from that. I should check with Skip. I never saw one that we approved anyway, by memory. So anyway, there was the suggestion from the person from VLCT that we might want to relook at the ordinance and.
Update it.
Update it. So they have a model, one, and there is, you know, a part about, there is state statute about having a hearing process in your, in your ordinance, in the town's dog ordinance. So, so we'll meet with Kim, and it sounds like we may be working on the.
The ordinance.
Sometime if you.
That's what you mean by the never. There's never nothing to do. There's always gonna be something to do.
So one last follow-up update. I don't know if I even mentioned this at a select board meeting.
Did you have chairing the health officer?
Yeah, so there was, you know, an incident on the Dog Pond Road where, and I was contacted as the default health officer by the resident. I explained that situation to them, that I technically really wasn't a health officer, even though the health department has determined by default that I was, and I really didn't know how, how to help. That was when I asked you for your report, which I gave to that person.
Yeah.
And apparently, they called the Callis Health Officer. He did come and make an inspection and wrote up a report, and communicated with me about it. We had some back and forths, and it kind of gave me the thought that, well, maybe we could share the Callis Health Officer group area. He checked with the health department about that, and they said no.
Right, I actually asked him about it. I saw him last week, and he said, no, we can't do that. And I'm not sure why that is.
I'm not sure either. I'd like to, I might call the health department and find out why. But we kind of figured out.
It was positive. Some of the other towns have shared health officers.
Yeah, what we could do, and, and, you know, we have to decide, he is willing to continue to, if there are problems to come, I would probably tag along, and then I would be the one signing it.
Writing the report.
Yeah, sort of signing the report. He might actually write it up for, for us. Seems like, you know, I.
I think, yeah, I don't have a problem with that, but I also.
Right.
Check, why?
Why, yeah, yeah.
See, we are the board of health.
We're the board of health, I get that, yes. But I'm not clear why you couldn't have anybody be the health officer, because in a large city, that's a paid employee, you could hire anyone from anywhere.
Yeah, yeah. Well, apparently, the health department told him no, so, so I will, I will contact somebody.
You know what I'm saying, we're a city of a hundred thousand people. You're telling me you can't, has to be a town resident to be the health officer.
You know, and I don't know whoever's determined that the select board chair was the default health officer.
We like that idea.
I didn't see that in any of the paperwork either. All I saw was, do you have a health officer, or the select board is a.
I got lots of letters from the health department about it.
Yeah.
So.
You know, we would make determinations as the board.
As the board.
Right, as health officer, come to us with a, whatever.
Apparently, there's something in state statute.
There is something different than that, yeah, because I have seen that, yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, I.
So we're still the board of health, but then the select board chair becomes the default.
By default, yeah, so, so we still, you know.
You gotta go strongarm somebody.
Right.
Now, there's somebody new over there, isn't there, in Heather's place?
Yeah, the people they got complained about across the road over here, behind you guys, the ones that were revving their motors and all that, they moved in there.
Well, they moved into the house.
Right.
Yeah.
Had not a trailer, right?
And the last thing, well, we shouldn't, let's not talk about this at a select board meeting, I can't believe. Sorry.
But I didn't know if that changed.
Let's, let's, let's not talk about it. It did, and we can talk about it later, if we want. But that's not to be public knowledge, I don't think. So anyway, I'll contact the health department too, and.
Just to find out if that's.
And maybe I'll complain to our legislatures or something, because, you know, the health, the select board has enough to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if this, you know, if, if the Callis Health Officer is willing to, you know, answer calls, because, you know, he told me that, you know, I hardly ever get a call from Callis. I have, I have plenty of time. I have the knowledge, you know, and he did.
No keeps.
He did get right in the middle of this situation.
He did, he approached me to ask me some state stuff.
Who is it?
Jay Copping.
Jay Copping, his assistant. Yeah, he's very, very nice.
Yeah.
So he does have a report that does need to be, and he said he would get it to me at some point that I need to sign. So that's our solution for the moment, for that.
Works for me. I think that's a great solution for the.
Yeah, it sounded good to me too, so.
You got a willing priority.
If this continues this way, I don't know whether they want to try to offer him a small stipend for his.
What were we paying the health officer before?
Nothing as far as I know. Were you, did you ever get any?
Ford bugger? That's why you don't get anybody.
So, so, you know, that's.
Ryan's been health officer before, he knows.
For a long time.
So that's.
You got bedbugs, all kinds of great things you gotta do.
We got a lot of bad stuff now, yeah.
Yeah, so that might be a conversation for the future.
Yeah, we should find some way to compensate.
Yeah, it feels like, especially.
We don't want to do it.
If somebody else is doing it from another town for us.
Yeah.
So that's, oh, you know, I did want to talk a little bit about the rail trail.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna get a committee established.
Yeah, I talked to Dan. I haven't called him lately, so I will get ahold of him again and see what he was putting back together.
They do have a meeting set up for, I think it's next week, and Jim is gonna be attending.
Okay.
Oh, good, yeah.
So it's mostly, you know, I'm just thinking of liability, not liability, but more legal stuff, you know, like, are there things set up so the incident that happened with a logger using the rail trail, would, would the, would the town, or the, you know, are there designated uses for the trail? Does the town, you know, all this kind of stuff that, that we would need to sort of have in place in order to have a case about restricting the, who uses the rail trail? So, you know, are there, is there like a rail trail use kind of policy that, is this?
Yeah, there was, there was. I'll try to look and I tried to find some.
And is the rail trail, is it a joint town? Is Hardwick and Woodbury?
It was a joint town when it was initially set up, Hardwick and Woodbury.
So, you know, who owns the trail?
Swenson.
Swenson.
Swenson's owns the trail, and, and there's an agreement with the Hardwick and Woodbury about the use of it?
Yeah.
Okay, so, you know, if there are any, you know, like, I don't know, a column bylaws or a policy, but, you know, any restrictions on.
And I think there was.
Who uses a trail? I would imagine there would be.
Yeah.
So, you know, we would need to have those.
Yeah, I started looking for my old copies. It's gotta be in the house somewhere, so.
So, yeah, so we would just have to, I think it would be good either have the rail trail committee review them, or, or the select board, you know.
See, the rail trail committee couldn't be the ultimate decision maker. They could come to board and say, hey, somebody's using this.
Right.
The town is obviously the, the rentor of the, you know.
Yeah, or the, however the arrangement is with Sunset Court. Because, you know, if the town owned, say if it was like an old road kind of rightaway that the rail trail was on, then, then the town would have, you know, those kind of laws, statutes for the plot.
Yeah, but as it was, Swenson leased it to the town, I think, for like ninety-nine years or something, and the rail trail committee was, been overseeing it.
So any of those documents that show that, that there is a lease with Sunset Court to the town, or to both Hardwick and Woodbury, you know, all of that stuff, either have the rail trail committee review it, or come and meet with us, and we'll review it together and just see what, if everything would hold up, so that if there was an issue, we would have all our ducks in order, in order to have it enforced. That's the key. If we don't have, you know, it's like the thing with, with this dog. If the ordinance doesn't.
If it's not in there, you can't do anything about it.
It can't be, there's nothing to be enforced. So we just, you know, figure out what we do want to have enforced, and then have something in some kind of legal document. So that, just, I think that's, you know, to.
Try to find that old documentation now, yeah.
So if this happens again, you know, we have something to stand on. If somebody objects and just says, well, you know, I'm gonna do what I want.
Yeah.
And I assume now they're out of there, and there's new snow, so everything's fine?
Hopefully, I am on the rail trail, good, yeah.
Okay. And does the, is that a vast trail also over that? So, so they probably have some kind of stuff too to say about.
Because of the closing logging up on East Hill, that the trail's been shut down, the groomers, our groomers are in Callis, therefore, the railroad bed does not get, it's, it's been groomed once, but cannot come back through because of the closing on East Hill.
Can't get to here.
Right.
They're logging up on East Hill.
Yep.
Same people, or?
No.
Okay. Well, that's it on, on my agenda, anyway.
Okay, we should do a adjournment.
Would you like to make that motion? You just did, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.